All right, sir, whenever you're ready.
Good evening on Veterans Day. Let's stand for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, which announced that the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this regular meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 PL 1975. At this time, I'll take the role. President Bonner.
Here.
Vice President Cologne.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
And Ms. Primack.
Here.
Mr. President, board needs yours.
All right. Happy Veterans Day to those of you who have served and those of you who haven't served, because there are other people in this room who've served the community in churches in significant ways as those of us who did serve, specifically teachers and people that work in schools. So thank you to you all. Welcome. We have some presentations this evening, and we have a lot of alternates to sort out and get through this evening. So I did turn that on. Some reason it came off. But so we're going to go into a presentation on harassment, intimidation, and bullying at this time.
Hi, everybody. My name's Laura Kaplan. I'm the Director of School Counseling, and for tonight, I'm the District Anti-Bullying Coordinator as well. And I'm here as we're required twice annually to report out data in the student safety and data system on suspensions, as well as harassment, intimidation, and bullying data, and programs, and trainings that we conduct. This presentation is reporting out data that occurred from January 1st through June 30th of 2021, so the second half of last school year. We're also including our school self-assessment related to HIV, those numbers that are going to be reported out to the state for the 2020-21 school year. We went a few slides ahead. Hold on one second. It's frozen on me. There we go. Okay. So as you can see, we include data from two prior years before this year. So all of the data represented here are incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying. They could include weapon offenses, substance offenses, and any other incident that led to student removal from school. So these incidents represent a time where a student was suspended in school or out of school or removed from the school setting. It's also important to note that a single incident can also consist of multiple data points. So for example, if there was a threat with a weapon, that's a single incident, but it results in a data point of a threat and then also a weapon use. So you can see the data for, this is again, January 1 to January 30 of the 2020-2021 school year. This is a continuation of that. These are other incidents that might not fall into any of the previous categories that are also captured in the suspension data. The other portion of this presentation is tied to our HIV information. We're required to report out the total number of HIV cases that are investigated and affirmed within the reporting period. That means that they've been affirmed at the board level. So what I'm going to be reporting here is the number of confirmed cases, as well as remediation that occurred for those confirmed cases. We also will be reporting out different trainings and programs and building-wide initiatives that took place. As you can see here, the first number represented is the number of cases that were investigated at any of the buildings represented there. The second number after the slash is the number of those cases that were confirmed, which means that they were found to be in violation of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So there was one case at Brayton, which was unfounded, one case at Jefferson, which was founded, and two cases at the middle school, which were both founded. The reason why there's an asterisk there is because one of the cases was not affirmed until after the reporting period, but because the incident date took place, I still like to report it out here. Here's a breakdown of the remediation for these cases. So as you can see, we only include remediation as required by the statute for those cases that were affirmed. That does not mean that the case that was not affirmed did not include some type of consequences or remediation. It's just for the purpose of this presentation, that's what's reported out. So all of them include student contact. They also include student counseling. And as you can see, some also require additional remediations, such as suspension of a device. That could be a Chromebook or cellphone or some type of use in school. Sometimes there's additional support services or referrals provided. And sometimes there's suspensions, removal from a classroom, or referral to agencies like the police outside of school. As you can see, the last case was affirmed in September, so that's why it was highlighted in that way. So different trainings that have taken place during the second half of the year. We continue to train on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Our school counselors K through 12, who are also our anti-bullying specialists in the buildings, have been taking part in our National Association's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training. And then I also attended a legal one. I annually attend an HIV update on the law, as well as case study and analysis. Different programs that take place across the district to address HIV are different curriculum related to social-emotional learning, morning meetings at the elementary level, classroom lessons at all levels. Each building has a school climate team that meets at least twice a year, as well as student surveys that take place. Every year, we're also required to do a self-assessment determination, and that's conducted by the school safety team at each building. There are eight core elements of that self-assessment that include HIV programs, training, instruction and curriculum, personnel, incident reporting, and investigation. Within those eight core elements, there are different indicators, and then you have to rate each indicator, as does not meet the requirement, partially meets, meets all requirements, or exceeds. Every one of our schools meets or exceeds in every single indicator. Here's the breakdown out of a possible score of a 78. All of our schools are at a 76, with the high school being at a 72. And that's it. Are there any questions related to any of the data that was presented? I'm happy to go back if needed. Thank you very much. See you again in six months.
Okay, we should be done.
All right, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Happy Veterans Day. Mr. Pepe and I thought it would be a good idea to catch up the board and the public on the federal grants and some county grants that we received since the start of the pandemic and how we're using the funds. And truth be told, with Mr. Pepe retiring, any other chances that he can get to create slides and present, he's going to take advantage of, because this is something that he's always loved doing. But right from the beginning of the pandemic, we received a lot of financial support from the government that helped us get through these last 20 some odd months. And we're going to walk you through these different grants, what the restricted funds were able to be allocated for, and how we spent them. So with that, I'll turn the first slide over to Mr. Pepe.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. So as you can see from the wheel, we've received a total of about $4.8 million with all the different issuances that came out. So the funding allocation started back here with CARES/ESER funds in the amount of $259,000, which was pretty exciting when we first got that award. What's different with these is they span multiple years. And this is all related to the COVID, you know, Coronavirus Relief Fund and all this. So when you look at the next three allocations, they're in break, because they came out around the same time, and one was the Digital Divide, which had to do with the remote learning, ensuring that every student had the opportunity to keep up with the demand that we're placing on with remote instruction. The CARES County Grant came out for $197,000, and at the time, this helped us procure some of the things like the rec of glass that we needed. It's also helped with a lot of the cleaning things that we needed in the buildings to ensure that we could provide a safe environment for students to return when they did come back, even though they were here half-time or half-day at the time. The CRF was the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That was an additional $167,000. And as you can see, these all needed to be expended relatively quickly between October and December of 2020. The next major round of money came in February of '21, and that is good up until September of 2023. And that was the first over a million dollar allocation that the district received. Following that, recently, we just received ARC ESSER III, which we're going to go into a little more detail on, and that was $2.7 million. It started out at $2.2, and then by the time they revised it from May, June, till September, it went up. And then lastly, we have ARC IDEA. So we also had some funds that are restricted to the IDEA or Special Ed category. So when you look at the wheel of the breakdown, you can see how big ESSER III is at 56%, ESSER II at 23%, and then you see it's filled out with the rest of them. So Mr. Huff's going to talk about how we spent some of the early monies.
All right. As you can see, if you take a look, you know, chronologically how these grants have been allocated and then expired, there was a big emphasis over here with the CARES Act in the beginning on a lot of the PPE, the cleaning. We spent a considerable amount on MRF-13 filters to upgrade our HVAC systems and air quality. There was a major focus on that, so those funds allowed us to do that. And then, as Mr. Pepe mentioned, the Digital Divide from the CARES Act allowed us to really achieve that one-on-one for our second-grade Chromebooks, albeit some of the shipments came in late. We had the funds there to support our initiatives to do that, and it ended up paying off in the long run. The county grant, the supplies again, the PPE, protective barriers, you can see, and if you add it all up, the amount of money that we were able to spend on all of the Plexi, because we had it in every classroom, on every desk, in every office, in every place somebody had a workstation, we had Plexi. And again, this was through the efforts of all the administration and support of the board that we did everything that we could possibly deal with these funds to make it as safe as we could, and it really did pay off, because we see our history here of staying open from the start of the school year last year to where we are here today. So I think this is a great exercise to look back and see how we supported our efforts to get there. Things started to shift a little bit, and you started getting into some of the federal grants, and the buckets of money that were allocated for these grants generally fall into accelerated learning, mental health support, and then air quality or HVAC improvement. So that's where we started shifting gears and prioritizing, where do we need to improve air quality as far as our rooftop units and HVAC systems on the various buildings? The mental health clinician that we spent money over the last two years on to support the social-emotional learning and wellness, mental health of our students proved to be very, very, very valuable and successful. And then again, we already started with our learning acceleration through our summer programming last year, where we provided four weeks of personalized instruction for hundreds of students in the district. So this is a little snapshot and a little progression of how you see the funds were allocated and being used, right up to, as Mr. Pepe said, the largest one, which I was going to speak to, ESSER III, which the application actually is due at the end of the month. So we're still in some planning phase on how we're going to move forward in spending some of those funds.
And one of the things that we continue to do as stewards of the district's resources is need coordination. So at every level, we were going through the Operations Committee, whether he was talking with the Ed Committee on different things, how those programming was going to work. And what it did is it really positioned us well, because we were in a good place prior to the pandemic and our technology. So we already had taken our one-to-one initiative down to the early grade level, and this just allowed us to ensure that we had a device for every child. So while other districts were struggling, we were able to capitalize on the funds that were available to finish that off. And again, that's, you know, because of the board and their foresight and the team, especially our technology department. So moving forward, September 15, the state, all the districts received additional notices at your summit on the line where you can't read, but it says $2.7 million. And as Superintendent Huff said, it's broken up over different categories, like up here, Accelerated Learning, Coaching, and Educator Support Grant, that was $332,000. Evidence-based Summer Learning and Enrichment Activities, an additional $40,000. Evidence-based Comprehensive Beyond the School Day or After-School Program, an additional $40,000. So Jen McCann's been working with us in those areas with curriculum. I've been, of course, looking at the facility improvements that are needed, that are pulling in the HVAC. So what does it look like? Well, ARC ESSER III in total is $2.7 million. 83% of it falls under the general category under ESSER. 12% is the evidence-based Summer Learning and Enrichment Activities, or $332,000. Then you see these are the $40,000, which are about 1% each. So in total, when we look back now at all of the allocations, that's how we come up with the $4.6 mil, and the first allocation represented 11% of the total pie, and that was the Digital Divide, the County Relief, and the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or $523,000. ESSER I was $251. You see the big jump in ESSER II, $1.1 million. And now ESSER III represents 59% of all funds we received, and that just showed up. So where, you know, what are we left with at this point? And then Superintendent Huff is going to finalize where we're going with it. So four buckets. The CARES will start over here. Of the $523,000, it's gone. We've already spent that. ESSER I, $251,000. We still have $2,600 left. So that's pretty much been spent out in accordance with the way the grants were written. ESSER II, of the $1.1 million, we still have about 55% of $616,000, and a lot of that is going to be dedicated towards a big HVAC project at the high school. And of ESSER III, the $2.7 mil, we still have. Now, one of the things that people have asked of me throughout the process is, hey, this is great. This is a lot of money. Can we offset expenses in the regular budget with this money? Answer is no. Like, all the grant monies, it's restricted. But being forward thinking, we're looking at how is it applicable to our actual needs. So the HVAC, if we're talking about the high school, started from a core of units that we already have, rooftop units, chillas, major equipment that has reached end of life. So Michael Martino will be responsible for a lot of that project. Are you sure you want to discuss? So this gives us the ability to take care of some of the stuff we needed to take care of without depleting our general fund balances or taking everything out of our capital reserve. So I'll let you talk the rest of the plan, sir.
All right, thank you. You know, and to piggyback on what Lou just said, you know, thank you to the Ops Committee, the entire board, and all of the planning that Lou and the rest of the team and Jen from the Curriculum Office have done, because when these things happen, we are that much better prepared to not only survive it, but to thrive through it. And that's really what we've done. And these funds and these planning has allowed us to earmark this next $3.3 million that's left over from ESSER III, which 2.8 of it is going to go to the new HVAC systems here in the high school. They're end-of-life units anyway, so it's timely. It's great to be able to use the grant funds for that rather than the operational budget or bonding. The learning acceleration, you see the $424,000 there. We're planning now to potentially do two more summers of this and then provide additional supports for the students who need it. And then our mental health clinician for $88,000. We're still looking at some of these numbers to see final application isn't due till the end of the month, so some of this may change based on needs. And if we skim a little bit from the HVAC, Lou's ready to give a little bit back, not a lot. But that's where our plan is for the rest of the ESSER III. $3.3 million. Thank you again. Thanks for coming out. That's our plan for how we spent our money from the grants and how we plan to move forward, because I believe the ESSER III will expire in September of 2024. So that's how long we have to use the funds. Thanks, Lou.
Any questions from the board? Is it my turn in the evening? So welcome, everybody, again. In the Good News You Can Use segment of the evening, I am highlighting the Jefferson Elementary Steam Room, not to be confused with a sauna. It is a steam room. That's an awesome dad joke that I tried out earlier today, and it got marginal reviews, so I figured I'd recycle that today. So we're focusing on the Jefferson Steam Room and our steam teacher at Jefferson, Kristin Scaglione Schuman, tonight. So as you may be aware, one of the district's 2021-22 goals is to develop a plan to expand learning experiences for all students in the areas of science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, to cultivate interest, encourage innovative thought processes, and to prepare future opportunities in a dynamic global landscape. This year, our steam room expanded for all grades at Jefferson to participate. First through fifth graders study different science units and then come to the steam room to do steam challenges based on what they have learned in science class. Ms. Schuman explains that the steam room provides students with opportunities to show their thinking in a new way and allows them to create, explore, and engineer in a collaborative manner. The steam challenges allow students to put what they learned in class into action. The third grade class recently completed a unit on motion and stability. They created marble runs to show that they understand forces, gravity, kinetic, and potential energy. Fourth grade learned about sound energy and built models of soundproof classrooms. Fifth grade learned about chemical reactions, and they engineered chemical reaction cars to create an alternative energy source to move the cars. I think they're on to something there. SEF funded collaboration furniture so students can move desks and chairs around the room, which has definitely helped our fourth and fifth graders fit in the expanded classroom. The Jefferson Steam Room fully supports this goal, the district's goal, and the district's steam committee is currently working to have these steam rooms at every school. We look forward to seeing the progress this school year and beyond to provide these creative and meaningful opportunities for all of our students. Summit parents will have the opportunity to see the steam room in action in the November Parent Newsletter, the Summit Scoop. So be on the lookout for that very soon. And I also recently saw it on social media. Is that the same steam room? Different steam room? Yeah?
Not yet.
Not yet. Was that a preview? I'm not supposed to say that out loud?
It's an exclusive preview.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, it's coming out, so you're going to see it, and it's going to be pretty cool. So look out for that, and we are certainly very proud of Ms. Schuman and all the work she does at Jefferson Elementary on behalf of our kiddos. So with that, I turn it over to the superintendent for his comment.
Thank you, President Bonner. I'd just like to start with a brief COVID update. We are hosting a vaccination clinic at the high school this Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 now that the vaccine is authorized for students age 5 to 11. You can register through our website, but they are also taking on walk-ins. Okay. From there, I'm going to go right to some district highlights, some excellent things to start the school year. And our primary centers are gearing up for the annual Day of Giving. Students will engage in activities such as creating thank-you cards for our first responders, creating holiday cards for sage elder care, and decorating travel mugs, mugs of warmth. Families will donate food and other items which will be prepared to deliver to agencies, just to name a few. Over at Washington, they have a beautiful mosaic being created on their cafeteria wall. Back from 2019-2020, this was the plan to have a professional artist come in to help with this project. Their theme was "We Choose Happy," but due to COVID, it was put off. But they are now re-engaging, and that work is undergoing right now, and I'm sure it's going to be wonderful. I can't wait to see that. Over at Franklin, the community really came together to help others during this year's Turkey Trial. It was a one-day donation period. Franklin School collected over 2,300 items of food that are donated to Grace's Pantry and Summit. That was an amazing outcome for that event. And over in Brayton, addressing SCL, their focus of resiliency, students are focusing on one of the six domains of resilience each month. November is about composure and regulating emotions, and Brayton's counselors provided lessons for every classroom on that topic and students to enhance their thinking about their emotions. They're giving every student a gratitude journal that they use on a daily basis. Over at LCJS Summit Middle School, they hosted a Veterans Day assembly today, and I want to say Happy Veterans Day to everyone. If you know a veteran, thank them. And I want to say thank you to three specific veterans who are here on our board, and Mr. Pepe, President Bonner, and Mr. Cho. They all attended the middle school assembly, and they were recognized by the administration and students there today. It was a wonderful event, and it was great to see the band orchestra and chorus back in full play today. Another outstanding sign of things to come. In addition, the seventh graders were able to finally take their field trip to Stokes, which was put on hold last year. So they traveled up to Fairview Lake YMCA camp, and they worked with their classmates to complete obstacles, participate in relays, tie-dye. There are Stokes T-shirts. So I want to thank all the staff members, from the high school students, the summit police, and the EMS squads for joining the seventh graders and participating in this very important tradition that we were able to maintain, just a year delay. At Summit High School, they did their second advisory of the year, focusing on kindness and empathy. In addition, they have over 340 students registered to take over 900 AP exams this year. Quite impressive. With the arts, as you may see, you'll certainly see on the way out, all the traffic. The fall play begins tonight, the opening night, and that is Romeo and Juliet. It'll also be airing or showing tomorrow and on Saturday, the 20th. Tickets can be bought on the district website. And that is going on right now as we speak. And then finally, I'll finish with some announcements on athletics. What an athletic season we had here this year in the fall. Loracada won the girls' cross-country Union County Conference Meet and finished second in the state sectional cross-country meet. The boys and girls cross-crunchy teams finished third in the state sectional meet and advanced to the group championships this weekend. The boys soccer just won today the state sectional championship by beating Cliffside Park 2 to 1. This is their first state sectional championship in 44 years. So congratulations to the boys soccer team. Outstanding. Parsley Field Hockey won their division. Girls soccer and field hockey have all advanced to state sectional quarterfinals. Girls volleyball have advanced to the state sectional semifinal. Freshmen girls soccer and freshman girls volleyball finished the season undefeated, while the JV football and freshman football teams both finished the season with only one loss. And finally, according to Mr. Healy, almost unprecedented, we had 11 Division I college commitments for the first national signing day of the year. We typically have maybe half of that by November Signing Day, so again, quite impressive. And it appears that our students are just eager and willing to get back to normal and thrive in all of their passion and skill in athletics. So thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
We didn't rehearse this, but you did mention it. Did you want to move some personnel items up?
I do. Before we continue with the agenda, if we can move the Personnel section up. And I'd like to make a few comments.
Floor's yours.
Thank you. As you know, as a board, we like to recognize our new hires and celebrate their addition to the school community. We go through a very rigorous hiring process, so we like to celebrate the best of the best, and we have a few of them here this month to recognize, starting with Emily Bean. So if I just, when I call your name, if you could just stand up, I'll say a few things. Hello, Emily. Emily has been a long-term Grade 1 teacher with us. She is now going to be in a tenure track over at Lincoln Humbert Elementary School. Her position is permanent. Emily has a Bachelor of Science degree in early childhood education and language studies from Vanderbilt University. Thank you, Emily. Megan Curran. Hi, Megan. Is going to be a kindergarten teacher at Jefferson Primary Center. Megan has a Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary education from Roger Williams University, and her Master's degree in urban education, teaching and language in urban schools from New Jersey City University. Megan comes to Summit with four years of teaching experience, most recently in Newark and Jersey City. Welcome, Megan. Christina Sarr. Christina will be a learning disabilities teacher consultant at Summit High School. Christina holds a Bachelor of Science degree in... in elementary education from Kutztown University and a Master's degree in special education from Kane University. She received her L D T C certification from Monmouth University. Christina comes to us with over 10 years of teaching L D T C experience, mostly, most recently in Manawha. Thank you, Christina. Mr. Michael Martino. Most of us know Mr. Michael Martino. He has been with us for 12 years. And as we mentioned, he was actually board-approved last month on the agenda, but he's joining us today to be celebrated here now and through the reception prior to the meeting. Mr. Martino has been with the district for 12 years. His most recent role is Supervisor of Maintenance. He's a certified electrician, a licensed HVAC technician, and he has a certified educational facilities manager. He has large shoes to fill in, Mr. Palumbo, but we are more than happy and can't wait to see all his contributions in his new role. Thank you, Michael. And then finally, Mr. Derek Jess. Mr. Jess comes to Summit with more than 20 years' experience as a school business administrator. He has a decorated reputation in this state for his tireless and dedicated work. Most notable achievements for Mr. Jess include being named New Jersey School Business Administrator of the Year in 2016, winning the ASBO International Administrator of the Year, I'm sorry, the ASBO International Pinnacle of Excellence Award in 2011. Mr. Jess has been a proud member of the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials for over 20 years, where he served as president from 2012 to 2013. He is also a longstanding member of ASBO International and the New Jersey State Board of Examiners, for which he has been the chairman since 2017. Once again, huge shoes to fill in the absence of Mr. Pepe, but a decorated career, and we are very, very happy and pleased to have Mr. Jess and look forward to all of his contributions. So, thank you. And I believe we can move forward.
We're just going to approve that whole entire section now. Welcome to the district. Nothing says welcome to the district like cheese and grapes. It is a longstanding Summit tradition. Unfortunately, during COVID, the plates are smaller and smaller every time, so you're welcome to come back the next time. So, we're going to approve Personnel Items A through W. Can I have a motion?
Second. Okay, I had Donna Miller moving it. I think I had Michael Cologne second it. On the roll, Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Because I'm confident those of you who we just celebrated aren't going to want to be here till 10 o'clock. We're going to take a two-minute break to let you shake some hands and head on out, and then we're going to start here in, we'll call it 40 seconds, something like that. 20 minutes to the hour, that's when we're going to start.
If our replacements are here, can we go home?
No.
Okay, and we're back. As part of the superintendent's report, we also have to vote on reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and some suspensions in the district. So, can I get a motion on superintendent's report? Aiden Russey, please.
So moved. Second.
Can the roll? Is Ms. Primack moving it? Ms. Miller second it. Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
And President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Committee reports. We'll go right into it, starting to my left. Education Committee, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Before I do my report, I wanted the board to know that I have received a phone call today, and since it's a phone call, I cannot forward it, so I wanted to let you know that I have received it because it is relevant to the day. The question was about today, in-school session. Why are the kids in school? And is there any way that the kids can have off in remembrance of Veterans Day? And as some of us know, within the last, what was it? Three or four years? Within the last three or four years, it became clear to the board that it was important for students to not be in our buildings during Election Day, and that the safety of our students was important. And because there are only so many ways to slice and fit 180 days into a school year, we, as a board, decided, with some veterans on our board, to exchange a day off to have Veterans Day be an instructional day and to have, for safety's sake, Election Day off. We not only like that for safety, but we love the fact that our students are in school, having wonderful programs, as they did today at the middle school, being instructed about the varied important aspects of Veterans Day. So, I explained this to the individual. She was completely satisfied and understood, but I thought it was important for the board to know and important for the public to know. Sometimes we forget why some decisions are made, and that's why the decision was made. Questions? Did I handle that all right, Michael? Did I do all right with that one?
I'm not adding anything to that.
Okay, good. All right. The Education Committee met just this past Monday, November 8, at 4:30. We met for 75 minutes. With me was Superintendent Huff, Jennifer McCann, Crystal Marr, Yan Cho, and Walida Justice. We had, it was a big data session. Our first discussion was on our E S L data. Crystal Marr, our Director of Student Personnel Services, reviewed our current K through 12 E S L placement data. And while there are always fluctuations on how many students are coming in in a given year, we don't control that. It is what it is. The committee was basically assured that we're within our norms. It's maybe fluctuating slightly higher than it was, you know, the past two years, but it's within our norms. Of note for the board to know, our programs are leveled in intensity and number of touches to ensure that our students are met where they are when they come to us and can get what they need to exit out of our E S L programs as quickly as is feasible. Our programs are bolstered by offering teaching tools and perspectives that are relevant to the students and reflective of their cultural experiences, and we think that is a very important aspect of our program. And our current data is that 60% of our students are carryover from last year. 21% are initial placements. That means that they're just coming in this year, new to our district, from places like, I mean, you just have to look at our M O I. They're coming from Peru, from Egypt. We're getting students from all over the world. 17% exited this year, and 2% declined service for E S L. Our average exit time, this was asked, I think, at a previous board meeting. Our average exit time is approximately three and a half years. That's terrific, noting the variables that we're presented with. Some students have zero English. Some students come to us with actually much less education than you would imagine. So, the fact that we can exit in three and a half years and have them proficient is a real testament to the teachers who do that important work. The committee was impressed, not only with what we're doing in the program, but with the fact that Crystal Marr, in just a few weeks here in the district, was able to figure it all out and present it in such a great way. So, thank you for that. We then went to our iReady data. As you may remember, the board approved iReady as a data point and an assessment tool a few board meetings ago, and Ms. McCann reviewed our most current iReady data. At the beginning of the school year, students were given a 60-ish-minute assessment, which measured proficiency at varied levels in very specific, in all of our standards and all of the specific domains that a student needs to understand. And our first assessment evidenced that our children are doing well. They're doing slightly better right now at the beginning of the school year in English than they are in math, but we have no concern in either of these initial assessments. And the committee was very, very pleased that iReady is doing a couple of things for us as a board, for students as learners, and for teachers as educators. For us as a board, the iReady data was, you know, I'm going to call it out, it was idiot-proof. I mean, like, you looked at it and you understood exactly what happened in these assessments, very, very clearly. For teachers, that means the way the data is run, they can, we don't see that data, but they see the students, where the students are needing not only remediation, but enrichment, and then can access numerous activities, which will either enrich or remediate that student. It's a fabulous, fabulous tool, as far as I'm currently concerned. And I think we were very smart to vote it in, I'm just going to say. And whoever it was, Jen McCann and members of the administration who found this tool, I think it's giving us the data that we've always asked for, and it's going to help us meet our goal for really utilizing data in a way that's going to help our students get what they need, when they need it, how they need it. Finally, we looked at a professional development recap. Ms. McCann and Ms. Marr recapped what was an absolutely robust set of professional development days that happened, was that just last week? Last week. Per usual, if you've been on the board for a while, you know that P D days are very well-done in both instructional and social-emotional learning areas, as well as some of the things that our state requires us to provide to the teachers. The sessions are led by our teachers, so it's peer-to-peer instruction, which is wonderful. And we were very assured that they meet not only our current instructional needs for teachers, but that teachers are getting the type of instruction that they're requesting, and that it's going to positively impact student achievement. We have no recommendations at this time. We will next meet on December 7, the 2nd, at 3:00 P. M. And that was our meeting in a nutshell. How'd I do, Yan and Walida?
All good.
I got it? Anything else? Questions? All good. That is my report, Mr. Bonner.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Operations, Mr. Cologne?
Yes. Thank you. The Operations Committee met November 1st, and we continued our tradition of having the longest committee meeting of all the committees at 110 minutes, so just under two hours. Attendance from the board, myself, Melanie Cohen, and Yan Cho, administration members Lou Pepe, Emilio Torres, Angelo Palumbo, and Michael Martino. We covered a few topics. Briefly touched on the budget process for '22-23, and just confirmed the calendar for that process and also the readiness of the administration to manage the process. And so, we're well-prepared to move that forward. We also reviewed the debt outstanding for the district, simply as a matter of confirming that we fall within all of the regulatory debt limits that the state imposes with respect to the debt levels for the Summit School District. And that's all well and good. Business machine leases. The Business Office presented changes to the lease agreements for our copiers and mail inserters. And I have to say, I know a little bit more about pages per minute than I ever wanted to after this discussion. And there will be changes. The good news is that the machines are being upgraded and also being obtained at a lower cost. And so, that's a win-win outcome for both types of machines. Facilities update. There's a lot to cover with respective facilities. We'll start with Brayton. So, there was a structural evaluation done on the Brayton building, the exterior specifically. The evaluation revealed repair needs, really on all four walls of the exterior of the building. That work is pending. The funding for that work will come from the Maintenance Reserve Account. In addition to the exterior remediation work, we reviewed the ability to mitigate flood damage at Brayton because there has been flood damage twice now over the last 10 years. And so, there will be a relatively low-cost solution. Manual floodgates for the entryways to the building is a short-term, well, actually, a potentially long-term solution. However, it may be enhanced with other measures for the classroom vents that are close to the ground for, I think it's three classrooms, that Brayton has that issue. So, we're exploring solutions for that, TBD there. We also reviewed the upgraded, and this has been discussed previously, upgraded Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School field area, including a 400-meter track around the field. The survey of that space was completed, and so, the next step in the process is for the Business Office to review the current sketch and schematic for that space with the users of the space and have the Athletic Director, Dan Healy, define the priorities for the use of the space. And so, it will be an upgrade from what is currently there. The track is obviously exciting, potential to add a field, a T-ball field. So, that's a good news result, and so, the fine-tuning will take place in the next few months. So, beyond those projects, we touched on this with respect to the grant money from COVID, the Summit High School HVAC project. The bids will be obtained over the next four weeks. And once the bids are obtained, then the scope of work will be defined. And so, there is the potential for full air conditioning here in the high school. However, we need to see the costs for that. At a minimum, the existing equipment is being replaced and upgraded. But as far as the expansion of the air conditioning, that's a TBD based on how the bids come in. Beyond all these initiatives, we spent time reviewing potential future projects. And these were greenfield, significant projects primarily to enhance the student experience at the middle school and high school level. And so, what we looked at was an expanded cafeteria space as well as steam labs in the Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School, as well as air conditioning, which is something that's been talked about over the years. So, that was also reviewed as a potential large-scale project. At the high school, we discussed the development of a hybrid media center and steam lab in the space that we're currently sitting in as a potential option. The plans for these projects are still at the conceptual stage. And so, there's, you know, at this point, there isn't funding for them, and so, they will remain conceptual at this point. However, the administration is going to keep us informed with respect to the potential for these projects to be implemented at some point in the future. And that was it. I did in my minutes say that there were no recommendations. That was a bit of an administrative snafu because if you look at the agenda, you will see in Section G, under Ops, G and H, the approval for the new copier and inserter contracts. And so, that is up for approval. Again, a win-win with respect to the costs going down and the quality of the equipment going up. And so, that is all. Our next meeting will be December 1st at 4:30 P. M. And I would ask my esteemed committee members if I missed anything.
Michael, I have one quick update. As of today, we contacted the auditor. They're close to finalizing our audit as of June 30, and we will have excess that we will be able to put into Capital Reserve to assist us with awarding anything beyond the base bid if we so choose to do so. So, as we talked about tonight, the HVAC that we're looking at, the high school, we're doing a holistic look at everything. And, you know, the funding that's coming through the Round 3 and Round 2 of Esser will not be enough to do everything. the Round 3 and Round 2 of ESER will not be enough to do everything if we so choose to award alternates. However, we should have the ability to pull money out of capital reserve if it is our intent to award some of those alternates.
Okay, great outcome. Thanks, Doug.
Hold on.
Yep, questions from the board?
Any questions? Okay.
Usually we don't have visuals for policy, but we have a lot. I just want to show that to you along the list. So buckle up, Mr. Cho.
Great late-night reading.
All right. So the Policy Committee met on Monday, November 1 at 3:30 for approximately 45 minutes. In attendance from the district were Robert Fardella and Kathleen Murphy, and then from the board, Michael Cologne, Melanie Cohn, and myself. Standing the little piece of paper you saw there, actually, there's only two policies for discussion and first read that I'll go over. The first is policy number 2422, which is titled Comprehensive Health and Physical Education. This policy is an update of the New Jersey Learning Standards requirements for Health and Physical Education for K-12 students. The primary focus of the requirements of this policy is the development of knowledge and skills that influence healthy behaviors within the context of self, family, school, and the local community. The statute currently incorporates a number of topics that students are familiar with and that parents are also. Examples are would be like drug and alcohol use, personal hygiene, financial literacy and such. This revision to the statute adds some additional topics which are to be incorporated into the curriculum on an age-appropriate basis from K through 12. The new topics are sexual abuse and self-awareness and prevention, diversity and inclusion, age-appropriate instruction on consent for physical contact, mental health, the New Jersey State Haven Infinec, and inclusion of African-American accomplishments. The second policy, policy number 2425, emergency virtual or remote instruction program. This is a new policy that essentially incorporates items that were covered over the past few school years related to the COVID pandemic, and that going forward, should there be some type of public health emergency, state type of emergency provision that allows a school district that is required to close a school or schools of the district for more than three consecutive days due to a declared such emergency, then the district can use remote instruction and have that remote instruction days count as part of the 180-day requirement. I will note, this does not apply to the random snow day as such. I mean, if we do have a 500-year blizzard, that would be a different story, but snow days will still be snow days, only again for more of a statewide public or type of weather or public health care state purpose. So the recommendations for the board are the first reading of the revision and the new policies as stated, and then the second reading for the policies covers the prior month, including all the regulations related to previously approved policies that are now being adopted as noted by Mr. Bonner. And our next meeting will be on December 1 at 3:30. I'll pause there, and any questions, Michael or Melanie in the summit board? Any questions?
Just a point of order to the agenda. If you look at Page 8 under Policies and Regulations, we are simply adding under the addendum all of the additional regulations that Mr. Cho talked about, and it's covered under Item A on the revised addendum. So when you pass the first reading tonight and the second reading under the first reading, all these regs will fall into that.
Thank you. Mr. Pepe.
I was hoping you'd read all these. There's the second reading under the first reading, which has now confused me greatly, but we're going to get there. And but before we get there, we're going with Communications, Ms. Primack.
Thank you. So the Communications Committee met on October 28, 45 minutes. In addition to myself, joined by Chris Bonner, Walida Justice, Lauren Callender, Scott Huff, and we were lucky to have Crystal Marr join us as well. We start with our, our first topic is now the post-implementation review of projects, which are also at this point the current projects, which is really excellent. There was a parent newsletter, the feature of the 18 to 21 program, discussed by President Bonner at our last meeting, a wonderful feature. There was this Summit teacher staff member feature, was about Laura Madden, second-grade teacher at Washington, and just her innovation in the classroom, thanks to her efforts to secure several different SEF grants. And so I think the focus was some flexible furniture and indoor recess tools and activities, really lovely feature on Ms. Madden. And just great to hear how just really the principal staff across the district has been very enthusiastic about these features and contributing, and you've already heard that Mr. Bonner had the preview of the next one. So we're excited for that to go out and for everyone to see the wonderful work being done at Jefferson. What is really, what all of these features, whether it is the parent newsletter, the teachers, they really, I think, all show, really highlight the many wonderful programs, individuals, that, you know, the root and the mission of the district, the focus areas, moving them forward, the goals, all of the initiatives, and I think it really is on display in such a wonderful way, the exciting work being done. So thank you, Ms. Callender, to all of the staff and everyone who's contributed to them. So I think they're just very impactful. I think we thought the pacing of the features was excellent, and just really meaningful work that's getting shared with the community that's being done. We talked about, following the last board meeting, we talked about our DEIV communications, so diversity, inclusion, equity. Ms. Callender, Ms. Marr, they presented a high-level overview of the plan in connection with the audit, which has a lot of different parts to it. The administration identified all the communications, various tools, platforms that they intended to use to really build a shared language and understanding around the audit, the various components of it, what goes on, what comes out, you know, and how it's ultimately looked at and used. The committee was very satisfied that the plan really ensures transparency throughout the process, and that it's really, that the information itself is really grounded in and reflects best practices. It's consistent, as previously stated, with the primer, primer, how am I pronouncing that, Ms. Marr? The initial document that we discussed.
I think it was the primer.
Primer, thank you. So it's, again, it's all consistent with the focus areas, the goals, so very excellent. And it will, as to the specific timeline and delivery, that will be determined by the administration, and as well as the substance of information that goes out. So we look forward to that. You've heard about the vaccine clinic, so we discussed, we discussed the communications around that, making sure that everyone knows the when, the how, the what to bring, and it's exciting. So old news by now, but very exciting at our October 28 meeting. And we're very satisfied that the administration really is very diligent in plan in how they try to reach families with this important information across many platforms, and as well as the community at large for something like this, because it is open to the media at large. As for community buzz, it was the 28th when we met, so there was just a lot of excitement going on about Halloween, right, and a little bit more return to normalcy, and people did seem at that time very focused on those very happy activities. I think a general sentiment that everyone was really enjoying, both in school and out, getting back to some of our just good traditions, good Halloween parades and such. So that's it. We have no recommendations. We're going to meet December 1, 8:45. I will ask Chris Walida anything to add? Miss clarifying?
All good stuff.
Any questions? Great, well, thank you so much.
Excellent. Okay, negotiations. We are still negotiating with the Summit principals, and we hope to wrap that up here in the next several weeks. So that's all I can report on that. Did anyone liaise in the past month?
I liaised.
Excellent.
I liaised with SEF in mid-October, and the special guests presenter speaker was, in fact, Superintendent Huff, so, which was really fun and great. And, you know, SEF, I was very interested to hear Superintendent Huff focused his remarks, I think, on the goals, particularly, I mean, all of the goals, but there was a particular interest, I think, on the STEAM initiative. And SEF once more reiterated, I think, what is well-known to everyone by now, their commitment, their commitment to move forward and help the district move forward with innovation and, you know, changes that, and opportunities that really are meaningful and impactful for the students. So it was a really positive discussion.
Okay. Any other liaising that you can use? All right, no other liaising. All right, we're now at the public comment section of the evening, everyone's favorite part. Mr. Pepe, can you read the ground rules for us?
Sure. Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition from the presiding officer, President Bonner. Once recognized, please move to the center of the room to the microphone. Unless you're granted additional time, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please do not engage individual board members, but speak to the board as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, public comment for items on the agenda. Something that we have discussed tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, and thanks to our veterans for their service. I'm Dr. Betty Livingston Adams at 12 Shadyside Avenue. My questions are comments, and I guess they really are questions, concern the items on the HIV student safety as well as CARES. You've provided a lot of quantitative information, and I'm looking now for something in terms of qualitative facts. What have you learned? What has emerged during this period as challenges and what are opportunities? Certainly in students and teachers and everyone else coming back into a space in which they had not been for some time, what have you seen? What looks as though it's sustainable, that we want to take forward, and what concerns do you have? Is that to be answered, or do I just throw this out?
I mean, it can be if it's something that we're prepared to answer, like right off the cuff, but I'm looking at the superintendent, and he's typing, so I'm guessing he wants to get back to the public with the answers to it.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty.
I'm saying, we can do that if it's very simple, it's an easy response, but like, I'm looking over at the superintendent, and he's typing feverishly, which tells me he probably wants to think about that and get back to the public with you on those answers.
Yeah, Betty, more than pleased to take notes and give a comprehensive answer to some of your concerns, and as, you know, we do speak outside the board meeting, I'd be more than happy to revisit some of this with you and share all that information as well.
Well, that's great, and I think it's one of the kind of qualitative information that would probably be very good for the public, and maybe I'm the only sole person in the public who says, looking at the quantitative is really great, but what does it mean? What does it mean in terms of students? What does it mean in terms of what the community needs to know? We've seen so many news reports everywhere of schools encountering different kinds of things or things that have been exacerbated by the conditions. So anything like that that you could share, the good news as well as, as I said, some of the challenges would be great. Thank you.
Sorry to take notes here. I'll get right to you. Yes, sir.
Good duty, Mr. President. It's Tom Getz and Dan at 141 Beechwood Road. I'm sorry that Derek Jess is not here. I wanted to welcome him to Summit, where is diversified a suburb that you can find in anywhere, easy commuting distance of Wall Street. I want to make sure he appreciates this. My wife and I both grew up in Shaker Heights, Ohio, a nationally-ranked, fully-integrated school system. We found that the Midwest values, which Jess and his wife also have from Cincinnati and Pittsburgh, are very much trusting the public education system as the number-one community asset, and he does too, and he's on board, fully with us. Our Board of Ed has responded to COVID pandemic very creatively, keeping school, district, keeping school buildings open as much as possible. But as you saw from Lu's Pepe's presentation tonight, there is no, there was no need to raid $300,000 of unused spending authority, known affectionately as bank cap. When Uncle Sam was handing out grant money like a drunken sailor, Summit has already received five tranches of grants totaling $2.7 million, and there's a lot more to come. I think you sketched a 4.8 of eventual ending. It's a huge amount of money. Summit, remember, the district enrollment is declining, and we now have less, we have 136 students less than we had a year ago, and 268 fewer students than we have at the peak, which is 2013. And so there's no need to waive the cap. It makes us look like a spend threat compared to New Jersey's 600 other districts who are getting by very nicely on COVID reimbursement money without having to break their cap. So besides enrollment, the pandemic has also changed our delivery system of teaching. Hybrid teaching methods abound. Thank goodness that we've invested heavily in technology that modernizes the way we deliver education. The bottom line is, this day and age, with no, there's so much in flux, there's no time to be exceeding 2% cap. Lu's existing $75 million budget is plenty big to accommodate new initiatives by redeploying existing dollars, not impose further on taxpayers who already give 51% of their levy to the schools. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for items on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, everybody who spoke to us tonight. We appreciate it. We need to approve some minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14 regular meeting, please?
So moved. Second.
Can the rule? Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. School board operation, which does include, as Mr. Cologne mentioned, our copier lease with Atlantic, that is A through, excuse me, going down, shortlist tonight, A through N.
And A through Q with the addendum.
On the addendum, A through Q. Still didn't make it into double digits, so it's still short. A through Q, can I get a ready, can I get a motion?
Moved. Second. Can the rule? I have Vice President Cologne moving it, Mr. Cho second it. Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
And President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Excellent. We already did personnel, so we're skipping ahead to policies and regulations, which include the policies for first reading and second reading, Mr. Cho mentioned, and then everything you see before you for the first read, from our Regulation 3160 all the way down to Regulation 8462. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was a tie. I'll give it to Ms. Miller. Okay.
Left-side bias, I think.
It is my ear.
Yes.
It's left-side bias. Bias.
Okay, so Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Let's see. Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Run her up. Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
And President Bonner?
Yes.
Everybody loves policy. It passed.
But they love finance even more, so let's pay for what's the good, for the good work that's happening in the district. A through E. Motion, please.
Moved.
Second.
I heard Ms. Primack seconded.
I'm going to test out that ear.
And Vice President Cologne moved it, so on the roll. Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
And President Bonner?
Yes.
We can pay the bills. Thank you.
Excellent. You're welcome, sir. We do have a need for a closed session tonight, so we will be adjourning and returning at some time.
They need a motion.
So let's get a motion to head on out, and most likely, we'll see all of you next month.
Give you a second.
Second.
Oh, there we go.
I don't want to close.
So on the roll, all favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Don't be like a tourist.
You're not going to second.
No, I'm looking.